Let us all stand in honor of America as we pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Madam Clerk, call the roll please.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is with great pleasure that the spotlight on excellence will be on the Lowell Elks, an organization, Lowell Elks Number 87, an organization that is working tirelessly for the community. Whenever there's a fundraiser, they open their doors, pop on a football, and many other fundraisers for the greater Lowell area. And this month's Spotlight on Excellence presentation on Wednesday, February 4, 2009, will feature the Lowell Lodge of Elks Number 87. At this meeting, we wish to honor and thank the organization for visiting our elementary schools and providing dictionaries to all third graders. During their visits, members instruct students on how to use their valuable resources. Members also ask students to provide feedback to the Dictionary Commission, informing them on how they have and will use the book. The following is an outline of the presentation. It is with great pleasure I introduce my friend and everyone's friend in the city who works tirelessly for the Salvation Army, the Lowell Lodge of Elks, Richard Preventure, leading Knight of the Elks and Dictionary Coordinator. Richard, thank you for being here. Let's give him a round of applause.
(applause).
It's a great pleasure to be here. I would like to introduce, before we start, our Exalted Ruler, Paul Savery.
I'm going to take about 30 seconds, and that's it for me. Many of you may not know, but the Lowell Lodge of Elks has been part of this city for about 120 years. And they strive to promote patriotism, education, Veterans Program, youth activities. This dictionary program that Mr. Preventure, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Murphy, who is one of the helpers, has done an incredible service to this community and to the students of Lowell. I also want to thank Mr. Leary because we do scholarships through the Lowell Lodge of Elks, and he helps to promote road races that earn money for our scholarships. So, thank you very much. So, he's also a past Exalted Ruler of the Lowell Lodge of Elks. Now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Preventure.
Thank you, Mr. Savery.
I left at your desk a book. The book is the one I use to show the students. And I tell you, I have a pleasure going into every single classroom. I have done Tingsborough. I have one small school to do in Draken, and I've got seven more days of Lowell schools to do. And the energy in the school system from the day I started to today is amazing. I find the kids today are more educated, better behaved, and I'm totally amazed. And there are some schools that you know that some of the kids are having a tough time, okay? Because the language barrier that's there and everything. But you read some of these, right? And a lot of them are coming from the foreign students, which I deem to be fantastic, okay? I show the kids that this is not only a dictionary, but, and we need the dictionary, but inside that book, there is the multiplication tables, there is the element, all the elements in the chemistry, there is geography, there is history. And I've asked them a lot of questions, such as on the presidents, and they're pretty good. I can stump them on some really minor stuff, but if you ask them a general question, I get an answer, and I have gotten an answer from every single class that I've done in Lowell. And I didn't have that before, but I've got it now. And one of the amazing things is the last page, the page that has the longest word in the English dictionary. That seems to get them. And what I do is I ask the teacher if she can tell me what it is. And of course, the teacher doesn't know. So, the kids get a kick out of that. So, together, we kind of make an association. Now, one of the things that I insist upon doing is that when we finish the presentation, I tell them, "You will now step up to receive your book." And I tell them, "I have more volunteers this year than I've ever had," because the program just seems to be progressing. And each child comes to an Elk, shakes their right hand, accepts the book with their left, says, "Thank you," and they know our first name, so they give us their first name. It is the cutest thing. If we had video cameras, I mean, it's amazing. I'm really enjoying it, and I think the kids are getting something out of it. You'll see by the letters. And let me tell you, last year, I received a letter from practically every child that we gave a book to. Now, one of the things that we have to worry about, and your school committee has to worry about too, is funding, okay? Because without the funding, there isn't a program. We are very lucky to have Mr. Ed Sullivan, who's the chairman of our bingo committee, who promotes this very hard and manages to get the money donated, because we did last year 2,100 books, and this year, I think it's going to be just about the same. So, Mr. Sullivan, you're responsible for the funding, and he has come out and helped me at various cases when he can, along with Paul. And let me tell you, it's fun, and I'm glad the kids can enjoy it. Besides, we also have soccer shoot, basketball shootout, drug awareness program, and we have a, what's the last one? The Americanism, with posters and everything. So, the Lodge of Elks is here, and all I can say is, "Use us," and we will be glad to come and do it. Mr. Sullivan, you have any words?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, it's a great program. We've been doing this about four years, and every year, it gets better and better. This year, we've actually given out 2,160 dictionaries in Lowell, Draken, and Tingsborough. And that includes all the private schools as well. So, every student in the greater Lowell area is getting a dictionary from us.
We've done, all the private schools are done, and the charter school was done. And they were very impressed, and so were we.
This program from the Dictionary Project is getting very big in the Elks, is a nationwide program. But in the area, we are the biggest in the state and Massachusetts to give out the most dictionaries in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So...
Thank you. And I must say, and I know my colleagues would like to also thank you, but the Lowell Lodge of Elks Number 87 is carrying on the tradition of Elks throughout the world. And we can't thank you enough because not only do you offer the dictionaries to children, but you opened the doors to the people affected by the flood in 2006. I personally will never, ever forget that. And you're doing great, great work. Thank you so much. And if my colleagues like counsel...
Thank you for the elevation. But I have to read my letter. I don't know if we all got the same letter.
Everybody should have gotten one.
So, while you're still here, "Dear Donald, Frank, and Richard, thank you for the dictionary. I liked the part when Donald was writing rude stuff about Frank and Richard, and I get to check the words. I don't know, I use my dictionary at home, plus I use it for homework, like spelling, to see if the teacher spelled the words right."
They're priceless. Priceless.
Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
Just real quick, I'm a member of this organization as well, as Mr. Savery pointed out. It's an organization that's been around since 1888. These guys have worked tirelessly with the dictionary program for four years straight. It's not, it's something they do as a labor of love. They really want to give back, and the whole organization has been, has been part of that. So, I really, as a member of the club, as a past president of the club, as a board of director, past board of director, I really want to say, "Thanks, guys, and a great job." Thank you.
The only, one last thing I'd like to say is, you know, our motto is "Elk's Care, Elk's Share." And we really, we really care about, you know, the kids in the communities. So, like Richard said, anytime we can, if we can do something, let us know.
Mr. Savery, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Preventure. Thank you.
Can we get a picture? The reason I say that is because you would like to put it into the National Magazine, if we can. Can we get a picture with you?
Sure.
There we go.
And we also...
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great.
Take a screenshot, should we?
Yes.
Bring that picture.
I'm not going to get it.
I'm not going to get it bad.
You know what? Let's, let's hold it here.
Somebody will stay, somebody just stay in the car.
I'm going to stay down.
How's that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with the agenda, I will now entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the last school committee meeting, rule for approval by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. All in favor of accepting the minutes and placing them on file in the debate scene? Aye. Any opposed? The minutes have been recorded and placed on file. Permission to enter, I believe we don't have any of that business this evening. Memorials by Regina M. Fattacante. Moment of silence in darkened chambers for the following. Lee Marshan, father of Lisa Rosell, Stockloes School teacher. Umberto E. Britt, Caputi, husband of Nancy Caputi, and father of Chanty Keo, Lincoln School food service workers. Robert Finesse, husband of Christine Finesse, Beale School teacher. By the committee as a whole, Carla Mary Homers, six-year-old Riley School student. Helen Empugias, aunt of Jay Lang, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Jill Lang, teacher at the Lowell High School. Thomas Thornton, Student Activities Coordinator at Lowell High School. And Philip Connors, teacher at the Stockloes of Middle School. Alice Gallagher, retired Oakland LeBlanc School teacher, mother of Michael W. Gallagher, former school committee member. Mother-in-law of Linda Gallagher, school nurse manager. Sister-in-law of Florence Gallagher, retired teacher of the Washington School. Aunt of Carolyn, a tutor at the Patucaville Memorial School. And Maureen Rogers, paraprofessional at the Daily School. Let us all rise with a moment of silence, please, for these... Thank you, and may they rest in peace. Moving on with the agenda, under unfinished business, by Regina M. Fattacante, request that the superintendent provide a report on the status of the magnet school program at the Bartlett School. Chair would recognize committee member, Ms. Fattacante.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had asked, I put a motion on the agenda a while back, asking for a report on the status of the magnet school program at the Bartlett School. And I was incredibly dismayed to get this communication. And so, let me read to you, and let me remind people what our agreement was. Our agreement was that we would close the magnet school downtown, that it would move over to the Bartlett, that the Bartlett Community Partnership, along with the university, would recreate this magnet program. And in the top part of this letter, I say, it says, "Currently, the Bartlett Community Partnership School is operating under the theme and mission statement outlined in the task force. Although the magnet school program of the former McDonough Magnet School has not continued, the Bartlett Community Partnership School remains all-inclusive." I don't care about the fact that it remains all-inclusive. I care about the fact that we made a policy decision over a year ago, and that policy decision is not being carried out. So, two things has to happen. One, if the university is unwilling or unable to carry out our policy decision, then they should leave the Bartlett School. If the principal of the Bartlett School is unwilling or unable to carry out the mission, then the principal should seek employment elsewhere. We had a policy decision. And maybe the former superintendent might have said to the people at the Bartlett School, "You know, the magnet school program, no big deal. The school committee, they're stupid. They're never going to figure it out. We don't have the same superintendent." And maybe that's the reason why. I find it unacceptable that a policy decision we made is not being carried out. A program that we thought was important enough to include in the program that they have there. I don't understand what happened. Now, yes, I can see your eyes rolling at me. I see that very clearly. The bottom line is, it's unacceptable that a policy of the Lowell School Committee did not get carried out.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I apologize if I'm rolling my eyes. I guess my biggest concern is that there is, just in terms of history, and as a member of the task force, having served on that task force, having sat in those meetings over the course of about four or five months where these actual conversations took place and where the recommendation was made to this committee to eliminate the microsociety component, where this committee voted and approved it, I can't say I'm shocked that that was actually enacted. I guess there's some surprise on this committee that an action that this committee itself took was actually enacted. But the facts of this are, a task force was charged with coming up with the best program moving forward, taking into account the strengths and weaknesses of two existing school communities. And that is exactly what was done. The school, the task force worked very hard to come up with these, with a new program at the Bartlett. It has been implemented to the letter in the way that this committee approved it being implemented. Microsociety was discussed at length. We had representation from the National Microsociety Organization that had presented. It was, as I can absolutely say without equivocation, we spent a great deal of time discussing exactly what it would bring to this program and what we wanted this new school to focus on. Those recommendations were provided in writing to every member of this committee, and every member of this committee, as I recall, voted to endorse the recommendations of that task force. I believe that there's a package included in the materials we received based on Ms. Fattacante's request. So, I can honestly say that they absolutely mirror my recollection of this process, and they certainly mirror the intentions that I felt coming out of that task force endeavor. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to, I have to compliment the administration, Susan Mulligan, with this report. It's immense. And I would like to be brought up to speed on this particular issue. And will you say, Ms. Fattacante, that the university and the administration at the Bartlett School are not connecting or not doing what they should be doing?
It was my understanding that the after-school component would be a microsociety.
That was incorrect. I apologize. That was, as part, it was something that was discussed, and it was something that was presented to this committee. Well, then, I apologize that that was not made clear, because it's very clear in the materials that you have, and in my recollection, it was very clearly discussed that we were moving towards a different model. The university-school model was what was going to be at the Bartlett School. Microsociety was not given the same weight, and it was a purposeful, conscious decision that we were going to be concentrating more on turning the Bartlett into a community-based, true, a magnet program that could accept students from, you know, any area across the city, but that the microsociety was not going to be the foundational principle for this new school.
And Ms. Martin, you feel that the university and the administration at the Bartlett School are doing exactly what was more or less presented to them?
As a task force member, yes, I do feel that. I mean, I think that there are, there, from the beginning, the big disappointment for me as a task force member was that we had initially began this process and this merging of the two schools with the intent of having a longer school day at the Bartlett. That was, for me, one of the most exciting aspects of it, which unfortunately was never able to really be implemented effectively because we ran up against a number of different roadblocks. But, you know, based on, you know, living through this from the very early, early stages, it absolutely has reflected what the task force had determined in terms of direction.
Could we have, Madam Superintendent, if you'd like to address this issue?
Yes, thanks, Your Honor. When Ms. Fattacante brought this issue to me and shared what she thought her understanding was of this particular school and how it was to be run, I told her at that time that I didn't have that understanding, but that I would look into it further, and thus was the motion, because I do understand that you did have a different understanding, but what, as you described, I didn't think was going on there, per our conversation. So, and I do have the same understanding now that I have had conversations with Ms. Mulligan, who sat on the task force with Ms. Martin, and knowing what is going on at the school, that the report does reflect what is going on at the school, and it does confirm my initial comments to you that your understanding of that this piece, the microsociety, was to be in place is not. And I just wanted to follow up to make sure that I was right on that. But I do have the same understanding as Ms. Martin does on this particular situation.
So...
I mean, I am somewhat, it's just helpful that people sat on the task force. This report dated 2005. So, but I did want to clarify, Ms. Fattacante, any misunderstandings there, because those programs aren't in place.
It was no misunderstanding on my part, Your Honor. I remember having a clear conversation with the former superintendent that the after-school component, which the university would assist with, would be a strong microsociety component. I remember having that conversation. So, so my concern is that if that, was that not conveyed? Apparently not.
I mean, again, I wasn't party to your conversation. I can say that we had talked about the after-school component having some of the aspects of microsociety.
Yes.
That that was where we were going to, we were going to try to implement some of the stronger aspects of it. But that, again, as I think I had said, the after-school component simply was never able to come to fruition because of a number of different obstacles, none of which had to do with microsociety one way or the other, but because of scheduling and constraints and a lot of other different headaches that had gotten in the way of it. But I'm sure that's the conversation you had, but it, as part of the task force, that was the only place we were able to find a place for microsociety. And when that did not come to fruition, it was impossible to then backtrack and turn it into something else. And there was no intention or no will on the committee to turn the regular school day into the microsociety component.
From what I could see, there's just a difference of opinion. And Madam Superintendent, maybe if you could have that principle, and the university also, give us a report of saying, "What are you doing there, and what are you achieving?"
Well, just a quick question. I guess what I had a question that, UMass Lowell is going through cuts, and I don't know if part of those cuts are reflective within the Bartlett School. Are they cutting some of their staffing programs? And maybe you can't answer that tonight, but if something, maybe going forward in a curriculum subcommittee, get that data and see if the UMass Lowell does have cuts that would pertain to the Bartlett. I know they're intricate, I wasn't on the committee when this was happening, but I know that UMass Lowell was involved not only during the day in terms of bringing some of the student teachers in to assist with different programs, but also had some type of programs for after-school. And those programs, I thought I read in the paper a while back, were under, under the knife, I guess, for lack of better terminology. Maybe that might be an area we can take a look at to see if there's something that was happening that we need to change and help with the regular budget or grants or what have you. Thank you.
Ms. Leahy.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in on this too, and sort of piggyback on what Mr. Leary said. I would just like to make sure that we're using the university to our, you know, we're partnering with them to our full potential, because honestly, what I've observed over the last few years, I don't think we are. So, I would like to make sure that we are full partners with the university. I've seen a few things over there over the years that we just haven't taken advantage of, quite frankly, and we should be. So, while this is all under review, we should speak with, I believe it's Dean Pearson, maybe, and just make sure that, you know, we have a strong partnership. Let them know that we do want this partnership, and let's reach our full potential on it. Thank you.
So, how do we want to leave this? Have the superintendent get back to us with a report from the school and the university to see, so we can all be on the same page?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like more clarification about what happened to the after-school program, because as I said, that was where our magnet school component was supposed to be. We were assured of that. At least, I believed we were assured of that. And to now see that it's completely gone by the wayside, not even a glimmer of a thought has been given to it, really disturbs me, because it was a policy decision of ours.
Well, Ms. Martin is saying, there is a program, they're initiating it, and so let's see if we can get...
I mean, just to clarify, I understand that the concern that the microsociety portion of this, that was meant to be that after-school program, didn't happen. I understand that. And it was certainly one of the initial plans moving forward. But again, as I think we all remember, this committee discussed parents pushing back, saying they did not want their students kept later in the day, refusing to choose that school because of the schedule, the concerns we had run into with working with our union in order to accommodate a longer school day, which proved impossible to broach, and the concerns of, again, that entire school community as to how they could incorporate a longer school day when they didn't have any additional resources to extend their school day. And again, did not, I mean, for me, what really had tipped the scales was this whole concept that parents were calling concerned that their children were being punished by having a longer school day, which was shocking to me, I have to be honest, as I recall that period of time. But, so, I mean, and this committee, again, took action to then return to the traditional school day at the Bartlett. So, it wasn't a matter of, perhaps we didn't articulate clearly enough that the reduction of that school day would result in the elimination of that microsociety component, but it was, the shortening of that day in and of itself was discussed at this, at this level.
So, could we get a report from the superintendent and bring it forward and be on the same page? What is the university, and what is the school doing, principal doing, and so forth? And it doesn't have to be a full report like Susan Mulligan tirelessly brought forward. So, I think it's probably just a simple, hopefully, a simple answer to the question that this...
It would be great, Your Honor.
Okay.
Could I, just...
Yes, Madam Superintendent.
Just point to clarification, an update on the after-school programming? Okay.
The micros, yes, Mr. Leahy.
And also, are we reaching our potential with that partnership? Right? We'd want that in the report?
So, it was a motion brought forward by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin, that the superintendent will bring a report forward so it can be all on the same page with this, with this particular school, the Bartlett School. So, all in favor of the motion? the shortening of that day in and of itself was discussed at this, at this level.
So could we get a report from the superintendent and bring it forward and be on the same page? What is the university and what is the school doing, principal doing, and so forth? And it doesn't have to be a full report like Susan Mulligan tirelessly brought forward. So I think it's probably just a simple, hopefully, a simple answer to the question that--
It would be great, Your Honor.
Okay.
Could I?
Yes, Madam Superintendent.
Just point to clarification. An update on the after-school programming? Okay.
The micros, yes, Ms. Leahy.
And also, are we reaching our potential with that partnership? Right? We'd want that in the report?
So it was a motion brought forward by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin, that the superintendent will bring a report forward so it can be all on the same page with this, with this particular school, the Bartlett School. So all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Then unfinished business, once again, Deborah Webster, physical therapist, who attended 25th International Seating Symposium to be held on March 12th through the 14th, 2009 in Orlando, Florida. The cost is $1,532 and will be funded through special education grant. Madam Superintendent, if you'd like to elaborate on, this was before us, two weeks ago, and it's back again.
That's correct. At that time, some committee members wanted additional information on what professional development opportunities existed in the state of Massachusetts with regards to professional development in sitting children and wheelchair. There is an extensive report on the offerings that are, that do exist within the state. I don't know if it's necessary for me to read those. Then the employee whose desire is to go to this workshop also outlined all of the particulars with regards to why she thought it was important professionally for her to attend the International Seating Symposium that is occurring in Florida as per the request of the committee, as well as additional information and responsibilities relative to wheelchair use, just so that the committee could have a full and deep understanding of what is required of her position.
Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm rather cognizant of the fact that this is obviously a very important symposium. But as I said two weeks ago, I think it was important, in light of the fact that it was over $1,500, to take a look and see if we could find something that could certainly meet the needs. A seminar or a training that would take place close by and that would perhaps save some money. And I think that, I think that does exist certainly in the, in the Boston area and certainly in New England. And in this particular situation, I could not, because of the difficult financial times I think that we're being faced with, I think we could utilize some of that money in a different, in a different direction. So I can't, I can't go along with this on that vote.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think, having reviewed the materials that were provided to us, certainly by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, as well as this actual, the actual staff person who is looking to attend this, this symposium, there was a great deal of information included in this packet. I think what I found most telling and most important was, we're really comparing apples and oranges. That the opportunities that are afforded to us previously in Boston, but apparently now the closest opportunity is New York, as I'm understanding it, that I believe the thing you were, the event that Mr. Conway had been referencing two weeks ago used to take place in Boston, but now takes place in New York and is a very different thing than what we're talking about. That the event in New York really is a sales conference, that there are three, and I'm going on memory here, there are three wheelchair companies that will display their models, will talk about why their models are the best, and sell. I mean, that's what it is. It's a sales conference. I think the difference in this, the International Seating Symposium that we're being asked to consider is pretty marked when you look at the sponsoring agencies are the University of Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh Veterans Administration, the Rehabilitation Engineering Research Center, I mean, these are, University of British Columbia. This is a very different thing than three companies trying to sell three kinds of wheelchair. And I think that, given the depth and the breadth of what this individual staff person is doing and the incredible responsibility she bears for ensuring the proper education of our students, I don't want her limited to just what three salesmen are trying to sell her. And I think that the scope of what is listed here in terms of what would be received at this symposium absolutely warrants the $1,500 to be spent. And I think that, again, when we talk about, we talk about the way special education funding is set up, that it can be such a challenge, that it can be such a drain, there's a reason for it. And the reason for that is that we bear a profound responsibility for the education of these children. And it is, has very real ethical considerations that need to be made. And I think that this is an investment in the education of over 40 students in our district who we are charged and responsible for. And I do not want to see them being shepherded into three specific wheelchair models that these individual companies want to sell us. I think our students deserve better than that. Thank you.
And you want to also weigh in this particular issue? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to note that after reading the conference request from the physical therapist, I was impressed by her two-page letter, it was very, or three-page letter, it was very thorough, gave us all the information we wanted. And I can see my colleagues' point about saving money, but I do think that, you know, we are looking at a whole different type of venue here and that this is quite the conference that she's going to go to, and it will benefit our students in Lowell, and I'm going to support it.
I'd just like to make a motion to accept the, to approve the conference request at the International Seating Symposium.
Yes. Before we take a roll call, I--
I need a second. I need a second.
Seconded by Mr. Leahy. I took the liberty to call Ann Murphy and the superintendent today. We're in a conference call. And the information we have before us now, I don't believe we had that information two weeks ago. And it's so important that the committee receives that vital information. And after talking to Ann Murphy and the superintendent, Deborah Webster is more than just a physical therapist. She's a jack-of-all-trades. And if she goes into a student's home, repairs that student's wheelchair, I'm not talking overhauling it, but repairing it so the student can get to school. I think there's more to this than meets the eye. And yes, there's probably conferences in Boston or Connecticut or New Hampshire. But from what I have been told, this conference is the state-of-the-art conference where Deborah Webster can benefit. And if she benefits by it, I believe there's 34 students in our school system, and they're going to benefit as well. So I agree with my colleague, Mr. Conway, two weeks ago, that we needed more information. And the funding for this is coming from the special education grant. And that's what that grant's for, to service those students who are in special education, who in wheelchairs and need that assistance. And as we all well know, it's a mechanical device. They break down and so forth. But this very dedicated employee fixes them, which I didn't realize. And if she can go to that conference and learn more information on those particular wheelchairs, then I think it's an advantage not only to the school department, but to the child. So I'm going to support this. Any other debate? Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, approved.
Do we have any public participation this evening? If none, we will move on with the agenda. And we're into the motions, portion of the agenda. Motions by Jim Leary and John Leahy. Direct the superintendent to hold on, filling all open employment positions within the Lowell Public Schools that may become available, except for teaching and professional positions for the remainder of the 2008, 2009 school year. Any employment positions which the superintendent deems to be critical will be subject to approval for funding by the school committee for the remainder of the year. Seconded by Mr. Conway. On the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Leahy and I made this motion, I guess, in terms of aligning ourselves and kind of showing support for our superintendent, having the school committee show support for the superintendent. Being passive at this time in terms of the way the economy's structured, the way the state and the federal government is being structured in terms of the monetary cuts is not a prudent way of handling ourselves. I think at this point, we need to be aggressive and we need to really go out there and do it in a confident way, showing that we're trying to save not only positions for our employees next year as well as this year, but also showing the taxpayer that we're trying to rethink exactly how we do our operations where practical. I think this would not only benefit our employees, but it'll benefit our students. And ultimately, the taxpayer will benefit from it as well. So I think being aggressive right now is the only way to come out of, out of this situation in a, in a successful manner. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate my colleagues on this motion. I think it's long overdue. And I think it's something that we have to, we have to be very careful how we spend that taxpayer's money. And I think this is a, this is a great direction that we're going in. So again, I congratulate both of them on this motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion on it? I just want to let you know that on the city side of government, Manager Lynch, in conjunction with the city council, there's been a cut on all overtime, unless it's absolutely necessary. Purchase orders are scrutinized. Everything has been cut back. And we are going to be facing some tough times July 2nd, and it's fiscal year 2010. So it's a good motion, and I think it's a way to address the downturn in the economy. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call on the motion.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante? Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Motion by Jackie Doherty. Request that the superintendent inform the committee regarding a new state mandate requiring cyberbullying educational programs, as well as provide a report outlining the district's plan to address the issue at each of our schools. Motion seconded by Mr. Leary. On the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it pretty much speaks for itself. I was at a citywide parent council meeting last week where I learned that there is this new state mandate regarding cyberbullying programs to alert students and staff about the issue. And I have since found out it's another unfunded mandate. There's no money that comes with it. But I think it would be of interest and important to my colleagues to find out how the district is responding to this mandate, what programs are going to be in place throughout the schools. And that's really my intent with it. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The third and last motion of the evening by Jackie Doherty. Request the superintendent provide a report on the number of students and teachers being released from school early for sports-related activities. The report should include data for three sports seasons beginning last spring to the present and include the number of students, teachers leaving early per week, per sport. Seconded by Ms. Martin. On the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know how much my colleagues value time on learning. And I just had heard some concerns around the district that a lot of our students are leaving early, and even teachers are leaving early on a regular basis who are coaches. Especially when we have snow days, this could be as many as two or three times in one week. And it might be okay if you're leaving at 2:00 once in a while, but if you've got an AP history class as your seventh-period class, or you're a teacher teaching a class at that time, I really think it's something we need to take a look at as a committee. And--
You say they're leaving to--
Leaving the building to go to a sporting event. Now, I don't know how pervasive the problem is until we get the data, but one possible remedy could be to petition the MIAA to have these sporting events start later. I mean, that's an alternative, you know, one alternative we could look at. But until we see what the data tells us, I don't know if it's a big problem or not. I just want to look at--
I don't think you can tell the MIAA anything.
Well, petition.
But, you know, it's, they're a very strong, determined organization.
Oh, okay. But I think we need to look at what's happening in our schools.
Okay.
And the number of teachers, as well as students, who this is impacting. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
I think one of the problems, Mr. Mayor, is with the wisdom of the school committee, in the past, they changed the hours at the high school. And school starts later. And I think that contributes to the fact that students have to leave on the other end in order to meet the obligations of the, of the sports event that's taking place. And as you said, it's very difficult, I think, to try to mandate to the MIA--
That's right.
--what, what to do. But we've already changed those hours. And I think that, you know, when I've, when I've talked to a few of the coaches, I know that they, that was certainly a concern. Because I know that teachers, and I, and I agree with my colleague, teachers do not want to leave their classrooms. They don't want to leave their classroom, but the fact is, they do have that event that they have to go to, and they have to be there at a certain time to meet that obligation. So maybe it's something that we should perhaps take a look at and see that time and see if that has actually helped the high school. And I know that one of the reasons why they did that was to cut down on the, on the tardies. And maybe we could get a report to find out if that has actually changed the tardy situation and has improved it or not.
I think if we were provided with a schedule of the sporting events, an indication is if Lowell High School was playing hockey against Acton, Barksborough, they can't leave here 15 minutes before the game. They have to, ample time to get there. I think the coaches are concerned about that. But if we received the schedule of the sporting events, maybe that would tell us a picture of what's, would that be okay with you, Jackie?
Actually, I mean, that would be fine to include that, but I'm really looking at numbers of students and staff who are leaving early. And I, the other thing I want to point out--
They're involved in sports.
Because of sports activities. There are two other things I want to point out. My motion does not specifically say isolate only the high school. I believe there are some middle schools that may also be involved in sports activities that I'd like to be also, this committee be privy to that. And the other piece in regards to my colleague's comment, I was on this committee when we changed the time, the high school start time. And it was never, at least brought to my attention, I mean, the high school supported that move. They were in favor of it. I mean, if it does turn out that that's a problem, I mean, I don't know. I really want to look at the data first. How many students and teachers are leaving? Because that, it impacts, if you've got a teacher out at 2:00, that impacts the other 24 children who are in the classroom, you know, the children. So I really want to look at that number first, and then we could start to delve into some of the other components of it. I don't know if it's as big a problem as, as I'm hearing.
Mr. Conway?
Just to clarify for my colleague, I do believe that was, that was recommended by, by the last superintendent, Dr. Baya, to make that change. And again, that was a recommendation, I believe, to the school committee.
Your Honor, I believe that for those of us who sat on this committee, it was a recommendation of the headmaster. He specifically requested the later start time for two reasons. If I, one, the tardies. But there were studies that show that young people stay up later at night on the internet, goofing off, whatnot. So they go to bed at 1, 2:00 in the morning, and they just don't get up as early as we would like them to. And they're, because they're teenagers, they don't function as well early in the morning. So we looked at a lot of those studies that said that, and the headmaster actually looked at them, came to us and asked us to change that start time for those two reasons. It was a specific recommendation by the headmaster of the high school, not, not the former superintendent. I can blame her for a lot of stuff, but this one is not her. Okay? It was, that was a direct recommendation from the headmaster.
Record that in the minutes.
Put that in the minutes, okay? I can blame her for a lot of stuff, but this one was not hers. But, so it came as a direct recommendation from the headmaster, Your Honor.
Ms. Martin and then Ms. Doherty?
Just in terms of history, and you might remind me of this, Regina, my understanding was this was when we had just gone from the split schedule. We, and we had an option of either going back to the early of the, we had two schedules going on at the high school because we had a much larger population. So we had some kids starting earlier, leaving earlier, some kids starting later, leaving later. The headmaster then presented us when, when numbers came back into a more reasonable range-- The headmaster then presented us when numbers came back into a more reasonable range, gave, had promoted going with the later time schedule for the entire school as we moved back into a single schedule. But that's exactly how I remember it as well.
Well, Ms. Dougherty, we will get that report. I'm sorry, Mr. Leary.
I just have one comment too. I would just like to know that in the report, this isn't anything new to us. So I'm just curious why this wasn't brought up by housemasters, curriculum people, you know, it just kind of amazes me why we bring this up when we have a staff at the high school and at the other schools. So I just, you know, we know they're leaving early. This isn't anything new. We decided that it would be better to have the kids come in later, but this was a trade-off. So if this is a problem, it should have been brought to us, I feel, than us bringing this up. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, did you... Do you want to say something?
No comment at this time, Your Honor.
That's a smart woman. Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, maybe we ought to include in that report the, for example, the tardies, whether it actually has improved or not. And once again, just for clarification, I know that I was not on the school committee at the time, but I was certainly at a meeting when Dr. Bayer highly, highly recommended that the time change. And of course, as we know, Mr. Samaras went along with that. Thank you, Mr....
Okay, we have discussed. Anyone else like to weigh in on this? It's a good motion, Jackie, and all in favor of the motion? Signify per se an aye and opposed? Motion carries. And now we're going to move on to my favorite topic, subcommittee reports. Lowell High School Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of January 27, 2009. Jackie Dougherty, the chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Lowell High Subcommittee did meet. Present were myself and fellow committee members Regina Fattacante and Dave Conway. Also present from central office were Dr. Chris Scott, Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco, Headmaster Bill Samaras, Dr. Wendy Jack, Carrie Lynch, and Phil Mayer from the Science and Health Education Department. We had a couple of items on the agenda. One was an update on the science labs. As my colleagues may know, we've been pushing for more consistent, high-quality science instruction and lab experiences for our students. And one of the concerns that had come up in prior meetings was the state of the labs and how much funding had been put into them. So we had a motion asking for a report and we saw that since fiscal year ending '04, we have put $525,000 into the science program specifically at the high school. So we basically had a kind of a, just a discussion about, again, the consistency of quality instruction and that more students have the hands-on experience. I think that as we move forward, especially during these difficult fiscal times, we know that one of our strengths in the Commonwealth is the knowledge of our workforce specifically around technology and science-related issues. And I think it behooves us in the schools to do the best possible job we can in instructing science. So that's just an update on the discussion. The second issue we talked about was the sex education program at the high school. As my colleagues may remember, several months back, we were talking about the lack of sex education programs at the middle school level and then we discovered at the high school, students learned about contraception and those reproduction stuff. I'm not that comfortable talking about it myself.
I'm not comfortable listening to it.
That that was happening in Health B, in Health B as opposed to Health... And so many students were not taking Health B till they were seniors and juniors, like we got a report that showed over 450. So the high school is, came forward to us with a plan to incorporate more comprehensive sex education at the freshman year and then build on that. And it wasn't, the report was not as explanatory as I would have liked in terms of the detail of how they were going to build on the Health A, Health B component. And so we had a motion among the Subcommittee by Ms. Fattacante, which was seconded by Mr. Conway, to invite the high school to participate in the middle school task force on sex education that's happening right now, with the plan being our educators in Lowell working together will come up with...
Who would administer or teach that program?
Well, the high school already has health educators.
Not Planned Parenthood or any other...
We haven't gotten to that point yet. We're still looking at what the...
Somebody can say the word sex education is in teaching the class.
Oh, you'd have to say a lot more than that. But anyway, that was the motion to invite the high school to be part of that task force.
You know, if, make a deal, deal or no deal, we would surpass that.
So we're going to hear back from the high school about a more detailed plan and they're going to be working with the middle school task force so that we have a real vertical alignment, to use that word, from 6th to 12th grade. There's a plan about age-appropriate instruction around this very important issue.
But who is going to implement this plan?
Our teachers.
Our teachers.
Yes, our teachers. I think that's the plan.
No outside agency, Your Honor.
At this point, we haven't really got a recommendation yet. Okay, so the third discussion was regarding education proficiency plans, which was in response to a motion by my colleague, Ms. Martin, where there's a report submitted by Carrie Lynch explaining the education proficiency plan process. The state requires that when we have students that do not reach proficiency level on MCAS, that we have a plan in place to ensure that student success. That is a requirement now that the state has asked us to do. So we had some discussion about that, but I know Ms. Martin was not able to make the meeting and I don't know if she had other comments or questions about that. We, as a Subcommittee, you know, looked at it as a report of progress. The last item was the headmaster announced a fundraising plan for Lowell High School improvement around the flagpole area at the front of the school. And this is in conjunction with the junior ROTC. And the fundraiser will allow the purchase of customized engraved bricks. So you can purchase a brick in memory of, you know, a loved one or whatever you want to put on there and that would be used, again, to beautify that neighborhood. I don't know if my colleagues have any other comments, but I would submit that as a report of progress. Thank you.
Do I see any hands or... Ms. Martin?
I do want to apologize that I wasn't able to attend the meeting that Monday. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get there, but I do appreciate that the Subcommittee did take up my motion regarding the education proficiency plans. I did actually, after the Subcommittee, once I had received the report, I did follow up with the superintendent and get some additional information, both from her, from the high school through the superintendent, also some additional information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, having a very difficult time with that change in acronym. So, which I think helped me a great deal to understand exactly what this, what the EPPs are meant to do. I just want to be clear as we move forward that basically what's happening is that students who reach that needs improvement threshold get additional resources...
Correct.
...that they can access. They have an actual plan that's put in place by their guidance counselor...
Correct.
...which will follow them through their junior and senior year. During that junior and senior year, they have additional opportunities to take the traditional MCAS when the whole school population takes it, when the 10th grade takes it, for example.
Yes.
Our 11th grader who hadn't reached proficiency yet would be able to take it again. But then they also have the opportunity, and please correct me if I'm wrong, to take Lowell High School-based MCAS tests. Is that, is that correct? That there are additional tests approved by ESC that can be given at the high school on more of an individual basis, are scored and scaled at the high school and that they need to have passed one of those in order to get their diploma?
They have to pass a regular MCAS to get a diploma. There was some discussion at the Subcommittee meeting with regards to this additional test that you just referred to, Ms. Martin. And it was discussed at that time that, given the fact that these plans, that people didn't feel like they could justify taking kids out of classes, again, to give them an additional MCAS, this other alternative MCAS that could be done at the high school, that's not corrected by the state or any outside authority. And by simply taking that only removes them from this particular plan, which in fact just ensures students are getting all the additional services that they need and has no teeth, per se, with regards to if they're going to graduate or not graduate, although it's one of those mandates that the state have said, you need to have this, but if it's, there's no consequence to the student for being on the plan. That was my understanding, Ms. Fattacante.
Yep.
So when we have these students who aren't able to pass and they file, they reach the appeal process...
Yes.
Where does that appeal go to? When they appeal?
It can only go to, the state will determine.
Okay, so that's going to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and they have their own process for that?
Yes, that is out of our hands, that's my understanding.
So that's when it leaves the control of the district?
Yes.
Is when they appeal to the...
Correct.
Okay. I thank you very much. It took a while to kind of get through all the information.
It's new, yeah.
So I appreciate that the Subcommittee spent the time on it and I thank you.
Motion to accept the report by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. All in favor of the motion to accept the report as a report of progress? Signify per se an aye and opposed? And Jackie, it was an excellent, excellent report and a tough subject matter as well. Moving on with the Subcommittee reports, Finance Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of February 2nd, 2009. James Larry, Chair.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate it. The Finance Subcommittee met at 7:04 PM. The agenda was, one topic agenda was the budget appropriation reduction. The city side informed Superintendent Scott that they were requiring that the school member deducents approved FY09 budget of $137,950,089 by $604,586 due to the recent cutbacks by Governor Patrick. Mr. Lang and then the administration, Dr. Scott made a proposal and they outlined four basic areas in terms of where to make these cuts. Additionally, the city side worked well with our administration. Mary, it would be well to know that we received everything timely and it was well thought out and thank you very much if you could extend that to the city side, please. The first issue that Mr. Lang brought up was some of the changes that the school committee already enacted with the Parent Information Center, the two clerical positions that won't go unfilled as well as the administration leaving vacant the Academy Chair for Family Life Consumer Science at Lowell High School for its total savings of $123,000. These are three positions that didn't go unfilled, did not go filled. Two of the positions were regarding a reorganization by the committee in the PIC. The second area was regarding the sick leave buyback reduction of $125,000. This is primarily due to a lot of our folks are not retiring because their own savings plans, 401Ks, what have you, have been devastated. So a lot of folks we're anticipating will not be retiring, they'll be extending their employment with us so we'll get some experience as well as some savings and that very well talked about topic at this point in time. The utilities, we were, Mr. Lang made a recommendation to cut $200,000 primarily because the city of Lowell, again, Mayor, your city side did a good job in locked into a very favorable utility contract for the purpose of electricity for all municipal buildings and we're saving a significant sum of money on the electricity side. And then the last one was $156,586 regarding the natural gas and oil. This is primarily due to two issues. One, when we initially budgeted last year, the gas prices and oil prices were significantly higher. In addition, we've done a lot of work in terms of our custodians and our school staff working to keep the oil cost, heating cost down, particularly in weekends. And a lot of our outside activities, a lot of our, as we know, basketball leagues, what have you, have worked well with us to help really keep weekends almost reserve-free where possible. So we were able to shave off $156,586. We discussed issues whether or not this was actually going to be achievable. Mr. Lang felt that these were pretty conservative numbers. We also felt that we'd be looking at, and the motion Mr. Leary brought up, the committee just approved in regards to not filling positions other than teaching and paraprofessional positions. So this is an area that at this point in time, it was, well, at the meeting, Committee Member Jackie Dougherty and seconded by John Leahy were in agreement to recommend to the full school committee that the budget reduction as outlined by Mr. Lang be approved. So I would put in a frame of, a form of a motion that the school committee approve Mr. Lang's recommendations and Dr. Scott's recommendations for $604,586. Thank you. Just need a second.
Any discussion on the motion presented by Mr. Leary? Motion by Mr. Leary to approve the $604,586 reduction in the 2008-2009 fiscal year budget. Any discussion? Seconded by, you want to second that motion, Mr. Leary?
I'll second it also.
Seconded by Mr. Leahy. You want to discuss?
I just want a quick comment. I just want to, I think that it's noteworthy that the administration, through their efforts, we didn't have to lay anybody off. I mean, we didn't want to make these cuts. We have to. You know, next year's a different story, but right now, to come up with that money, I think that they should all be recognized. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, I'd like to also comment that I'd like to personally thank the city, led by Manager Lynch, in securing that really good rate for electricity that we were able to take $200,000 off of our electricity line item in savings. And I'd also like to say, I think it's fantastic that we're able to save $350,000 by conserving energy. It is exactly what we should be doing. And going forward, we should be looking for more ways through recycling, conservation to, again, save money this way. It's a good way to use our resources more wisely. Thank you.
Good point. And I must say that we're going to have to take a look at every nickel, diamond, dollar. And if we do that, if we do that, we can get through this economic downturn. Washington, Beacon Hill, Lowell, Massachusetts has to come forward with initiatives that will save money and keep the vital services that the people deserve there. So let's take a roll call on that motion presented by Mr. Leary. It was an excellent report as well. Motion, roll call?
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
The third and last Subcommittee report is the Joint Personnel and Finance Subcommittee Report of February 4th, 2009. Connie Martin, Chair of Personnel, and James Larry, Chair of Finance.
It is a very short report. We were not able to meet this evening. It has been postponed and so we can expect to, the superintendent's office is going to be pulling the committee to find an appropriate date, working with the city solicitor's office and the auditor's office to find a convenient time for them for this next meeting so that we can bring together these two subcommittees.
Thank you. Accept the communication, place it on fire with Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor? Signify per se an aye and put the communication on fire. Reports of the superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Lowell Adult Diploma Program. I'd just like to bring the committee's attention, I won't read the entire memo, but just to give you an overview, there are 20 students enrolled regularly attending the Lowell Alternative Diploma Program with five students anticipated to graduate in June of 2009. Working closely with Lowell High School Hostmaster, Rob McCarthy, five Lowell High School students have been enrolled through the new six-month waiver process. Additional students have been introduced to the program through outreach and referrals by UTEC street workers. Will I read the next report on...
Yeah, and we'll take them all at once.
Okay. Report status, report on equipment for hearing impaired students. We have provided you an Excel spreadsheet there. If there are any questions I can entertain or have Assistant Superintendent...
Ms. Martin, have a question on that?
I just wanted a quick question. As we're looking at, I had looked at this students number, let's see, eight through 14, the McCullough students, I think?
Yes.
So these were, are these all individual students?
My understanding is that's the case.
So they're each an individual student?
Correct.
Yes, every student has a number.
Okay. So at the, during the course of this, the beginning of the school year basically, which is what we're looking at...
Right.
These were all the requests that came in for new equipment?
Yes.
These are all the students who have equipment, who have assistive technology for hearing. And so what I've asked the Director of Special Education to do is when she provides the report to you, to do it in the same consistent format with each student listed and if there was any work that had to be done. If you'll see, student number 15 through 18, it says... If you'll see, student number 15 through 18, it says working order, nothing, nothing was done with the equipment, everything was fine with it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Superintendent?
I think just add to that, Ms. Martin. Some of our schools have some of our early intervention programs and the children are quite young, so that would be the initials on those. The Drop Out Prevention and Recovery Work Group, and I would like to compliment Assistant Superintendent Murphy on the work that she has done on dropout prevention for Lowell Public Schools. And I'd bring the committee's attention to the second page of this report and I would like to read the second paragraph. "As a team, Ms. Murphy's team, we have identified key factors and early indicators that contribute to our dropout rate, which include poor academic achievement, history of multiple school transfers, attendance, attendance issues, atrophy issues, and a number of discipline referrals and multiple grade retentions. We are examining student data for early indicators at the middle school level to identify students' risk levels and explore strategies and interventions to respond to the students' needs. In addition to examining student data and trends, our district work is comprised of one, examining alternative programming, two, exploring ways to provide a cohesive, cohesiveness between the middle and high school attendance policies, retention policies, credit recovery programs, and three, using data to enhance learning opportunities, instructional practices for all students, but particularly limited English proficient students and special education students." Ms. Murphy and her team are also members of the Commonwealth Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Team who are looking at these serious issues as they relate not only to Lowell Public, but coming together and with other districts who share similar concerns to collaborate on solutions to address these very important issues. Does it, Your Honor?
Except on three reports reported progress.
Any discussion or debate on the reports presented by Superintendent Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report, a motion by Jackie Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Conway, to accept the report as reported progress and place it on file. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye and any opposed? The reports have been accepted and placed on file. Moving on with the agenda. Any new business? New business?
Yeah, regular school committee February 18th, I guess it's on school vacation. No. Right here.
Yeah. I don't know what that, what that, yes, Madam Superintendent?
I just want a clarification from the school committee. If in fact they intended to have a school committee meeting on February the 18th, that's vacation, school vacation week, just point of clarification.
Houston, we will have a school committee meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Write it in your calendar. Bang, we'll be here. Okay. Convention, conferences, requests, Madam Superintendent?
The first one, Phil Malat, Tim Patterson, LHS staff, along with two chaperones and 22 Lowell High School students to travel to Spain and Portugal from Saturday, February the 14th, 2009, through Monday, February 23rd, 2009. There's no cost to the school department and no substitutes needed.
Let's stop right there at that one. You were present at the meeting where we set some new ground rules. What we learned during the past week, Your Honor, was that the department head who was supposed to submit the request for this trip, which is taking place next week, forgot to do it. Just forgot to do it. That's number one. Number two, they engaged an educational company that cannot guarantee a departure and arrival date. They cannot guarantee it. So I found out over a month ago, Your Honor, that this trip was in the pipeline. Now, I knew about it and I knew that the school department, the high school, had already been told that they would be coming back on a Monday. So this individual, this department head, waited until we had our meeting and then sent this mea culpa, mea culpa note to the school committee. They planned this almost a year ago. He couldn't submit the right, the request then to go? No, he waits until the two weeks before the meeting. And then, Your Honor, we said very clearly, if it's an educational trip, we want you to outline the guidelines where the, it meets the educational frameworks. What does this person say? Oh, if you want me to send that in a second letter, I'll send that in a second letter. By the time we get that, Your Honor, they're going to be on the trip. Now, I think we were pretty clear. This is a vacation. They're going to go to a castle. That's nice. That's very nice. I've been to a couple of castles, very nice. They're going to go to a, a museum. There are lovely museums in Massachusetts. They're going to go to the Coimbra University Library. Are they going to study or learn anything or no? They're just going to go visit the library. The Lowell City Library can match any library in the world, it's wonderful. It's not an educational trip, it's a vacation. Now, I realize they collected a lot of money, but it was his responsibility eight months ago to come to the school, the school committee and request permission for this trip. So I guess no one is going to wonder how I'm going to vote. This is irresponsible. Incredibly irresponsible on this person's part and kind of a slap in the face. Oh yeah, if you need those educational frameworks, I'll send them in in a second, in a second letter. No, no, it should have been in this letter. And maybe it might have convinced me that it was an educational trip, but this made me more convinced it was a vacation. I spoke to the superintendent about this and what I said to the superintendent was, going forward, we should be very clear to department heads, if the travel agency cannot guarantee the date of departure and the date of arrival, then we will not book trips through that agency. Now, Your Honor, you've been all around the world.
Part of the world, yes.
Okay? You have been told when you're going to depart Boston, Massachusetts, and you know when you're coming home. So I don't understand why this, why this company can't do the same thing. So I'm voting no. I'd love to hear what my colleagues have to say about it, but I'm voting no. It's very irresponsible of this department head to put us in this position. And then it apologizes at the end, but sort of like, it's a half-hearted letter. I don't really feel this is an apology at all because it didn't follow any of the guidelines it was supposed to follow. Thank you.
I, I'm going to recognize, Mr. Conway, but listening to this almost once a month.
Yes.
It's almost like we need a travel agent in the high school. Someone who is responsible for travel and it's, this is, I mean, I mean, the buck has to stop with someone over there. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that my colleague, Ms. Fattacante, is, is correct when it was a mistake or an oversight, which I think that's one of the reasons why we do have erasers and pencils. Occasionally, a mistake is made. And you're right, Mr. Mayor, there are a number of trips that take place at the high school and I think there's a, there's a reason for that. I think that we try to, should we say, compete in all areas and certainly academically with the surrounding towns and, and communities. And we know that many of these wealthier towns can put together a, a trip in a matter of a few months. When a trip is put together at the high school, they actually have to be planned sometimes a year, a year and a half in advance. So there are a number of trips, I would assume, that have been already in the pipeline and that's why we are seeing them. But I've also been told that, that certainly the, the high school will adhere to the rules naturally that the school committee has put forth as of a few weeks ago. I think the other problem that we encounter is the fact that because many of our students, Mr. Mayor, are not that wealthy and go home to mom and dad and just have them write out a check, it takes many months and many fundraisers in order to come up with that kind of money. And therefore, I think that what has happened in the past and what is, has continued to happen is the travel agency that they pick is a travel agency that they have done business with for, it's my, I, I think it's somewhere around 25 years. And the reason, Mr. Mayor, is it's substantially cheaper than the other agencies. And that's why, I, that's why many of the trips are, go through that specific travel agency. And once again, I, I think there's an oversight, but I certainly don't want to see 26 or $2,800 of a student and hard-earned money thrown down the, the tubes because of a, because of an oversight in, in a particular, in a particular case. So I'm going to vote yes on this, Mr. Mayor.
You know, but no matter how the vote comes up, we, the superintendent and the administration has to set some policy, someone in that high school is in charge of travel. And that is going to be a simplified way of addressing this issue. Because I can see this is going to go on and on and on until someone's responsible for the, all the travel that goes on in that high school. This is going to continue. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Obviously, this has been an issue we've discussed. And I have to say that, you know, I, I recognize what my colleague, Ms. Fattacante, is saying and I have been absolutely right there with her throughout this process. My only difference at this point is really two things. One is we've already, you know, we had already kind of set the, the practice of, well, it's already, you know, money's already been taken, so we're going to let them go, which is what this committee had voted to do for the, the Canada trip. I also will say that I know, you know, having read all the packet and having read the letter from Mr. Jarvis, and I will say, having graduated from Lowell High School with Mr. Jarvis and having known him since I was about 13, I do know the sincerity in his apology and I do know that he is very sincere in his, you know, he did not want, I'm sure, for this whole discussion to come up again and I, I can attest to that, for what it's worth. It is a very difficult thing and the only thing that in my mind is kind of tilting the, the scales right now is this whole concept that the money has, has been collected and we made that, we made that decision before as a committee. I will be honest, due to my level of conflict, I really am planning on voting present on this and I will defer to the, the judgment of my, my colleagues. Because I just think that it is, moving forward, it's absolutely true that someone at the high school should be in charge of this. I would posit a guess that someone at the high school is in charge of this and we pay them and they are in the positions to do this, this job. So I think that moving forward, we need to take into account that, again, this committee is going to be looking at these things in a much more strict way and I think it's going to be a real challenge for us moving forward.
Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. Let's be very clear about what can happen here. If we vote no, these students can still go on the trip, but they will not have an excused absence and that's what they're obviously need to do. They will not have an excused absence and they will not have our insurance. So when I brought that up to the headmaster, the headmaster said to me, well, that's not a big deal because these travel companies, they have their own insurance. I said to him, so why do you even bring this before us knowing the dilemma this is going to create? And it's because of the excused absence. So these students can still go on this trip, but they will, if, if, even if we vote no, but they will not have an excused absence because they're going to be returning on Monday.
But if this is brought before the selected body, they have to have our blessing.
Right.
And that, that's, that's a big issue.
If they want our insurance, Your Honor. So if somebody falls and breaks an arm and it's not covered under the travel agency, the city of Lowell would be responsible for that. Of course we would, these are our children and that's why we take the vote, that's why it's so important for us to do so. But Mr. Jarvis has been an employee of the school department for a long time. He planned this trip a year ago and he admits, I sent in all the other requests and I missed this one.
Who was Mr. Jarvis's superior?
Mr. Samaras.
Then, you know, the buck has to stop with someone. And someone has to say, well, we have a trip planned and it's just in the schedule and it's, it's not a big surprise to us. So, Mr. Conway?
Just very briefly, the, Ms. Fattacante is correct as far as the insurance is concerned, but it's my understanding that it's an additional $100 for each student in order to, in order to acquire that insurance. So it is an added cost. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy and then Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you. I hear the conversation. I just think that, you know, any of these trips are very educational for the kids. I don't know why they just don't get a calendar. They go on these trips every year, year after year. Why don't they just do what the ROTC, ROTC does and in September, send in a request for all the trips? Because this is ridiculous though. I know. So we argue about this and it's ridiculous. They get a much better, well, they get a very good experience going on these trips than one day in the classroom. So, you know, there's no reason to deny it other than the fact that we're just tired of seeing them coming in, you know, after the fact that they're supposed to be here on a certain date. But, you know, just recommend that they get a calendar and they write it, they send them in in September, I mean.
Ms. Dougherty, then we're going to take a vote and move on.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to point out to everyone that it was a couple of weeks ago that we reaffirmed the policy and we added one component that I think is very important. And that is before any money is put down, it comes before us. This was just decided a few weeks ago. It's now in writing and it's clear for everybody to know. I think going forward, we absolutely will adhere to that policy. But for today, I think, as was mentioned by my colleague earlier, we already took a, a vote regarding the Canada trip. We do not want to incur additional costs for our families and I think that's the way we should go today. But we do have very clear policy that in the future, no money is put down until the dates and the trips are approved by the school committee. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I would like to bring to the committee's attention that I did receive a letter today from this department head after I requested from the high school, were there any trips out there that were in the pipeline coming down? Because as Mr. Conway has referred or made mention, fundraising for some of these trips, I gather, begins a year ago or a year before the trip. So on my desk today, and I have been in correspondence with the department head, there's a trip in 2010 and 2011. And my understanding in this letter was that fundraising had begun for the 2010 trip. And I have been in correspondence with him to ask for him to put in all of the paperwork, do not proceed until he gets further approval, given the new policy that's in front of us. So I just wanted you to know that is the update and we're still dealing with things that have occurred many months ago before this particular policy, so it is still a problem.
Ms. Fattacante?
And finally, Your Honor, I think we also need to make it clear to these department heads that the travel agencies we use may be cheaper isn't better. Cheap to me sounds scary. Cheap to me sounds third rate because I know when I go on a trip, I know the day I'm leaving, I know the day I'm coming back, there isn't this amorphous, gee, you might come back on a different day. Especially when we're dealing with children, Your Honor. I mean, as a parent, I would be extremely concerned that the travel agency could not exactly determine the date of return. So I think that in the future, through you, Your Honor, to the superintendent, if we cannot get a clause in the contract that guarantees the date of return, then we don't use that company. Simple as that, we don't use that company, we find another company. There are lots of good companies out there that recognize you leave on a Saturday, you come home on a Sunday, you go to school on Monday. And if we can't find a company that does that, then these next two trips, see you later out the window. It's just, I mean, I don't understand why, this is a problem for us.
Before we take a roll call on this particular issue, Madam Superintendent, could you appoint a travel agent at the high school that anyone who plans to take on a trip must go to this person and want all the details, et cetera, so in the future, we don't run into this problem? Madam Superintendent?
All approvals do come from the headmaster, so, you know.
Maybe it needs to be somebody other than the headmaster.
Well, someone who, that, that... Well, someone who, that, someone who that these department heads have to go to.
I do like the idea of Mr. Leahy's suggestion of a calendar like the ROTC. They bring forward a whole list of dates that they know that are coming up, and to Ms. Fattakanti's point, this issue would go away. Now, I have a list for 2010, 2011, but if we hadn't asked, I might not have seen it to next year. So, I think a calendar, especially if they know these trips are coming up, that a calendar being put forward would help clarify the situation. So, I will request that.
Because I can see there's going to be a continuing...
Absolutely. I agree with you, one hundred percent. Because they're always going to think they can get away with it at the last minute, just like this.
Motion to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Present. Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakanti?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, one present. It's approved.
Madam Superintendent?
The second one is Lowell High School staff member Jim McNamara, along with ten Lowell High School students to attend the State Competition of Business Professionals of America on Friday, March sixteenth, Monday, March ninth, in Framingham, Mass. The cost of the conference will be paid by BPA Fundraising. A substitute teacher is needed for two days at the cost of $200 to be paid by the individual school funds.
Motion to approve by...
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fattakanti, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakanti?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
The third one, Brenda King, Lincoln School Paraprofessional, United Teachers of Lowell Union Representative, to attend the American Federation of Teachers Paraprofessional and School Related Personnel Conference on March twentieth through to the twenty-second, 2009, in Baltimore. There will be no cost to the school department and no substitute is required, is needed.
Can we take up the next one, too, Your Honor, at the same time? I think we probably approve the both of them.
It's fine with me.
Burke Walker and the Lowell High School Student Boys Lacrosse Team to travel and compete in Nittucket and Martha's Vineyard on April the twentieth through to the twenty-first, 2009. The cost of the trip will be funded by the team. This trip takes place during April vacation. No substitutes are required. And there's a fifth one, with regards to our cheerleading, cheerleaders won a competition, and it's an MSSAA sanctioned cheerleading competition coming up on February the thirteenth. That's after school on Friday through till Sunday, and the team will, would like to travel to Holyoke and the team, so Hadley and Worcester, Massachusetts. The total expense will not exceed $300 and will be paid by the LHS Athletic Department. No substitute coverage is needed. No time from school will be missed, and a detailed itinerary is attached.
Move approval, Your Honor?
Move approval for Articles Three and Four...
And Five.
...by Ms. Fattakanti. And Five, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakanti?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
On communications, I, we all received a nice thank you from, thank you for your kind of expression of sympathy and tribute to the memory of Thomas F. Murphy, Sr. Accept the communication and place it on file by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor? Signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Communication is placed on file. And there's also a thank you note from the family of Conrad Rock. Do you have that, Jim? And a thank you note from Luke Mason. Accept that communication and place it on file by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor? Signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Those communications are placed on file. Professional personnel, United Teachers of Lowell, hereby request to donate sick leave days to the following teachers and paraprofessionals. Motion to approve by Ms. Fattakanti...
Prove, Your Honor.
...seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakanti?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Before we adjourn, we all are aware, Winter Fest this weekend, and it's extended by one day. Thursday evening is going to be, the tour's downtown. We can go to various restaurants for appetizers, entrees, desserts, a martini, whatever. So, we're looking for people to go downtown and support the local restaurants. And then, on Friday, Winter Fest will open with the human dog sled racing competition, and that will extend into Saturday, and there'll be entertainment and the chowder and soup contests and hot chocolate and so forth. And I think we all deserve to get out of the house, to get away from the winter, down in the blues of the winter season. So, come on out this weekend and enjoy. And I also want to let you know that The Subway Shop on the corner of Shattuck and Merrick Street reopened today. They complete renovations, and it's beautiful inside. So, if you're, if you're in the downtown area, stop in and get a great, great sandwich. And Madam Superintendent and the school committee, the ROTC students, the thank yous are coming in rapidly from elderly people who are getting their sidewalks and steps shoveled. These kids are absolutely polite, respectful, and we're all proud of them. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn...
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
...by Ms. Fattakanti, seconded by Ms. Martin. Thank you very much. A great lady.
Yep. Sorry, I'm sorry, it's cold. Here's your things. Thank you.